Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Gloucester zoning Board of Appeals meeting of February 13th, 2025. As per government approval, this meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting, meaning we're meeting in person, and it's also available to participate on Zoom. For the record, the Zoom meeting ID number is 823-5275-9139. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Catherine Schlichty, Ronald Wilson, and on Zoom, Peter Canavo, and I'll declare we have a quorum. First order will be the approval of the minutes of January 30th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, may I request some corrections?
For?
All right, on page two, the very last sentence, and you know what, Natasha, I'll actually give you this after where I've written all that. On the very last sentence, it says, "The petitioner, 306 Properties Mass LLC, is seeking..." Can we just insert "dimensional variances and variance to back in the front lot?" So insert the word "dimensional," and then on page three, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, it's a single sentence. The petitioner said, "Get rid of the garage," if we could just say the petitioner was drawing his request for a garage. That's it. Oh, and then one more thing on page four, again, 143 Essex Avenue, the second to left paragraph, last sentence. He's going to be removing as much stairwell as possible, if we can just say as much exterior stairwell as possible. I guess that is... That's it.
Take a motion to approve as amended?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Aiden, seconded, roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Minutes are accepted. Next item on our consent agenda is a vote to approve for the chair to sign the following decisions that we have completed in-house: 39 Cliff Road, 61 Woodward Avenue, and 143 Essex Avenue, and I'll take a motion on that.
I would like to move that we approve the decisions for 39 Cliff Road, 61 Woodward Avenue, and 143 Essex Avenue, as shared.
Second, and approval for the chair to sign them.
Roll call.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Okay, get into our hearings, we have one continued hearing and four new applications tonight. The continued hearing was the petition of Driscoll Cape Town Residence Trust seeking a special permit to alter and expand a nonconforming structure to expand the kitchen in a variance to expand in a flood zone, 65 Atlantic Road. This piece of the application from previous meeting was pulled aside as we did a little research, and I will ask, are we just finally getting the answers, and I'll ask Catherine if she would tell us about what she found out.
Yes, this was for a request for an expansion of a kitchen in a high-velocity zone. The floodplain overlay district says that expansions of buildings in the high-velocity zone is prohibited. So we had the question as to whether we could grant the variance from a prohibited activity, and after speaking with Suzanne Egan, she says the prohibition is prohibition, no expansion of buildings in the high-velocity zone. Secondly, just a reminder, one, there's a separate application for applicants who do have any activities in the floodplain district that needs to be presented to the board, you can't use the standard zoning application for those, and variances for expansion of building in the AE zones is a very high standard, it's exceptional hardship, so... But she said, "No, we should not be granting A variances for expansion of buildings in the high-velocity zones." So I don't know if the applicant wants to withdraw that request.
Right, so Attorney Sheedy, we did approve the previous piece of the application last time. What would you like to do at this moment? Continue to look into it yourself or withdraw without prejudice?
I think the action to take would be to withdraw.
Okay. Pushing to withdraw?
I'm move, on the petition of Driscoll Cape Town Residence Trust seeking a variance to expand a kitchen in the flood overlay district at 65 Atlantic Road, I would move approval of a withdrawal of that request.
Second.
Aiden, seconded, roll call.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard our decision, we've allowed a withdrawal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our first new application of the evening is the petitioner of James Salsich III and Heather Honus, seeking a special permit to alter and expand a nonconforming structure on a conforming lot to reconstruct a single-family home pursuant to 1.9, 2.4.3, and 2.4.5 at 10 and 10 Ria, Montvale Avenue. Represented by Attorney Ellis.
For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. The applicants are James Salsich and Heather Honus. The contractor is David Gonzalez of Gonzatino Home Improvement. The designer is Duam Campos from Matna Studios, and as you said, the property is located at 10 and 10 R, Montvale Ave. And if I may share my screen, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. This is the property, and it is, we are, excuse me, let me just do one more thing here. The applicant is seeking special permits under Gloucester zoning ordinance 1.9 and 2.4.3 for the demolition and reconstruction and alteration of a pre-existing nonconforming structure on a conforming lot, and a written determination under GZO 2.4.5 that the new structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. There is no other relief that's required. The applicant seeking to demolish the existing single-family home and replace it with a single-family home that is in the same location. There are two existing dwellings on this property that are shown on the assessor's records as having been built in the 1900s, early, before 1900. The existence of the two principal dwellings on one lot is a pre-existing legal nonconformity. Likewise, the existing encroachments into the front and right-side yard setbacks will remain, and there are no new nonconformities that are being created. So you can see that on the, this dark area is the footprint of the existing building. The building will be expanded to the left, and there will be no new encroachments created by the expansion to the left. Mrs. Honus's mother will be staying in the house, and the improvements are necessary to make it usable and comfortable for her. The new house will be slightly higher than the existing house in that it will be two stories. However, it will remain significantly under the 30-foot maximum above the existing average grade at 26 and 8 and 1/2 inches. The owners purchased the property about a year and a half ago, and would like to update the smaller house for Mrs. Honus's mother. There have been no material improvements since it was first constructed. The existing dwelling is only 436 square feet, the new home will be approximately 1,600 square feet, which is a fairly modest home by today's standards. And this is the front elevation, this is the side elevation that faces the owner's other home on this property, and this is the elevation that faces the neighbor, and this is the rear elevation. The property is in the R10 zone, which requires 10,000 square feet. This property has 22,457 square feet, it's more than double what's required. It requires 2,000 square feet per dwelling unit, and it has approximately 11,000 square feet per dwelling unit. The existing house complies with the rear yard setback, and it complies with the left yard setback, and it also exceeds the lot width, which is 65, and the frontage, which is 65, it actually has 150 feet of frontage. The right-side yard is not compliant, it is currently at 7 feet, and it will remain at 7 feet. And with regard to the front, the house remains compliant, but the stairway is a little bit longer, so instead of the 4.9 existing setback, they're asking for 3.3 feet. The lot coverage is compliant at 3.7 percent, there is a 30 percent lot coverage allowed in this district. The applicant has submitted one letter of support from an immediate abutter to the left, and not aware of any opposition. There have been some questions with regard to on-street parking, and although there's no prohibition, the parking will be in this large lot behind the other house, and there will be a pathway as well as stairs built to go directly to the new house, so that it will be a much more convenient location for the parking. With regard to the legal standards, special permit for the alteration or expansion of a nonconforming structure should be granted because the new home is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing nonconforming home. There will be no new nonconformities, and although the house is larger at two stories, it is still only 1,600 square feet, which is very modest, and well below the size of many of the other homes in this neighborhood. It brings much-needed updates and improvements to the building that, as I said, has not been improved materially since it was first constructed. It is also consistent with other homes in the neighborhood as far as location and size, and although the applicant isn't required to show hardship, the topography right behind the house becomes quite steep from 5 to 10 feet. So the new home will be more usable and more comfortable for Mrs. Honus's mother. And with regard to the determination to demolish and reconstruct the house, there are same standards with regard to not being detrimental to the neighborhood. In addition, they will follow the rules under 2.4.5 regarding the timing, demolition, and construction, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions at this point by book? Okay, we'll take some public testimony. I'll remind everyone, if you're going to speak either in favor or opposed, we first need to establish your name and address before you start telling us how you feel. People that are online, you dial, you hit your raise hand button if you're on your computer, if you're on your phone, you dial star nine to be recognized. We will monitor that and bring you in equal access to anyone that's in the hall. If you're in the hall and want to speak on something, just come forward and to the podium, and we'll recognize you there. So with that being said, anyone wishing to speak in favor, in favor of the application, please come forward. Anyone in favor, and if you're home, raise your hand. Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, or raise your hand if you're home.
Hi, my name is Gil Leyd Law, I live at seven... Thank you. Hi, my name is Gil Leyd Law, I live at 7 Montvale Ave, diagonally across the street, directly across the street from 10. My objection to what they're doing is the off-street parking, the 10-foot that they speak of, I have some pictures of the snowstorm, nobody's climbing up that hill if they live down at the bottom of the hill, and they're putting in three bedrooms for one person. They need four parking spaces down below. They could put four parking spaces down below by taking on a couple of trees and extending just like the other neighbors do, but to tell us they're going to park at the top of the hill, I don't believe that for an instant. Sure, there's plenty of parking up there, I get that. The problem is, nobody's ever going to use it, and I have a couple of pictures of what the road looks like now with snow. Can I bring those forward? So the roadway out there is 40-foot wide, the right-of-way, but only about 16-foot of its paved. There's actually a car parked in one of those pictures, it's parked down there because they don't have room up above. It just doesn't make sense to me what we're attempting to do here. I'm not opposed to them increasing the size of the house, that doesn't bother me. I am deathly afraid of the amount of parking we're going to end up with, because I know what it was like before, people parking down there. I've lived up on this hill for 40 years, so, and that's the choke point in the road. If they could, if they could clearly put parking right in front of that deck, they could put four parking spaces and make use of the right-of-way that's there.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, or raise your hand. You want it? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony, and we'll offer opportunity for rebuttal. Attorney Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to point out that they are not required to meet the parking standards, however they do, it requires one and a half parking spaces for each home, and they have three up in the back. And as I said, they will be creating a path, a paved path, so that someone can walk from the back downstairs to the new home. So they will be creating a path of travel, but there is no requirement that they, you know, create any additional parking other than that. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
What is the potential to divide into two lots?
They would theoretically, I guess, have the ability, they have the frontage, they have the size. I don't know whether practically it can be done because that hasn't been looked at.
In that case, if they applied to the planning board, would they not then have to come back for relief for the whatever's left?
Well, they would be losing their grandfathered rights if they did that, and I believe under the ordinance, it does require them to meet all the requirements or get variances.
All right, so there's some protection there against that.
Well, couldn't you go for a special exception to existing lots that existed on the building prior to zoning, you just, you could get a subdivision of the lot, provided it doesn't exacerbate health or safety?
Well, that's what I'm talking about, so it doesn't make the lots conforming, so you would still, if you wanted to do this building, you'd have to get variances, I believe.
Yeah, you would lose your...
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ron?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions. One is, in the overall plot plan, I see a stairwell or something on the right side of the building close to the neighbor, but I don't see that in any of the proposed layouts. So is it in or is it out?
There's no stairway on the right, correct?
Yeah, but if you look at the new elevations, there's nothing on the right.
No, I think he's looking at this on the right.
I'm looking at the plot plan, which is on page A.
There is one existing now, but that will not be with the new building, yes. Correct.
So it is on the right elevator.
So effectively, it will not be as, it will be further from the neighbor's yard, it's not four feet as shown here, it's seven or eight.
It's seven feet. The building itself is seven feet.
I don't know if this is a statement or a question, but the building is going up 15 feet, and it is in the setback on the right. So to me, that it's a tremendous increase, more than doubling of the volume of the building in the setback location, and at a minimum, I'm not sure about that. And I certainly don't hear anything from, I guess it's 14 Montvale, who would be directly affected, because that's practically in their driveway. At this point, that's just my observation.
And I think what I'd like to point out is that the standard is substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and not just one particular neighbor, and also in the past, although I know there's no precedent here, when a building stays significantly, in this case, under the height allowance, this board has voted, considered it not to be substantially detrimental.
Right, and I, so to be clear, if it was a, an application for a special permit, it would, or requiring, it is a special permit, but requiring variances, then the, how high that wall is would be a factor, but I don't know that, the wall being taller, but not, that line stays where it is, and obviously Dietrich says we can, we can keep going, we can go back and forth and make it longer and shorter, and it speaks not at all about the height, so, again, the standard would only be substantially more detrimental, so, and I'm not sure, especially since nobody's, if it was above the height, it was 31 feet, then we'd be taken into all the factors of shadowing and obstruction and all that, but that's not the case, so I think we're good with regard to the height of the wall.
Yeah, I...
Thank you, Attorney Lysin and Joe, for clarifying that matter for me.
Yeah, I mean, I do think it intensifies the existing nonconformity, even more building in that setback zone, but is that substantially more detrimental, is the determination that you need to make than what exists there now? So, yeah. I personally don't think it's more detrimental than what exists, I mean, I hear what the neighbor across the street says about parking, and, but again, parking's not an issue before us, we can't require parking, there is adequately, there is adequate parking on-site, parking is allowed in the street, I don't think there's a prohibition against parking in the street, I think if it gets to be a problem, then you need to call the building department or the police department and say, "There's a hazard here," but as far as looking at the application now and saying they have adequate parking, I think the project itself is a fine project, and I don't think it's any more detrimental than what already exists on the property, there's really quite a lot of room on that property, and I think if the resident in the house up to the right finds it arduous to go downhill to the house from the existing parking place, like you said, there is room there to put parking, you know, at a lower elevation or whatnot, so I don't have a problem with the project.
Peter, you all set? Peter, you good?
I agree with Catherine, I don't think it's more detrimental to the neighborhood, and like you pointed out, Chairman, we're under the height limit, so I don't think that raises any flags. I think the overall project is modest, like Attorney Ellis mentioned, it's only 1,600 square feet, although it is increasing the size of the building, I don't think it's, you know, causing any issues, and from my own education, this is because it only needs a special permit because it's a current nonconformity, and it's not increasing the nonconformity, is that correct?
They need a, it is a special permit.
Right. It doesn't need a variance.
Tear down and replace, but there's no variances required.
Right, because it's...
No, it's the two-step.
...no conformity.
There's a two-step process. First, does it intensify the existing nonconformity? If the answer is yes, if the answer is no, then they don't need the special permit.
Right.
If the answer is yes, then they need the special permit.
But they don't need a variance because it's not encroaching on it.
Because you can, you can, as long as they're staying in the same line of incursion into the setback.
Right, that's what I'm...
They're going farther along.
Correct.
Setback.
Right.
And that's just an intensification, yeah, of the existing...
That's what I was asking. Again, I'm completely okay with this project, I think it's pretty straightforward, they got adequate parking, how they choose to use it, that's on their time, but they're providing what we need before the zoning board.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion, someone wants to make one on this special permit?
On the petition of James Salsich and Heather Honus, and I apologize if I butchered your names, are seeking a special permit to alter, expand, and nonconforming structure on a conforming lot to reconstruct a single-family home at 10 and 10 Ria, Montvale Avenue, I would move approval of the special permit.
Motion made, need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Peter, roll call, vote.
Ms. Schlichty?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I agree, it is an increase in nonconformity, however, it doesn't rise to being substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, therefore I'm voting yes. You've heard our decision is favorable, use help with a draft, would be great.
They certainly will, thank you very much.
Yes, next application is the petition of Andrea Finch, seeking a special permit to build an attached accessory dwelling unit and a variance for sideyard setbacks under 5.2, 4.4, and the variance is 3.2.1 at 38 Grapevine Road.
Hi, my name is Leslie Fink, I'm representing my mother, Andrea Fink, who is at 38 Grapevine Road. That was kind of a tough act to follow, I don't have a presentation. I am not an attorney, yes. So we, my understanding from our builder, Scott Burnham, Burnham Construction, is that we now, because we're asking for a variance on the sideyard setback, that now we also need a special permit for the ADU, just because now it is in that nonconforming category. So my husband and I are going to be moving in there to allow my mom to stay in the home, so we've decided to do the addition, which now, I guess, at first, when we started this, it was an addition, now it's an ADU, based on the... Now it's an ADU based on the...
It's a, it's a, it's a attached.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly. So the, I think you have all the plans there. It's under the 900 square foot regulation for the ADU. The side yard, the, I don't know if you had a chance to go by the property, but that side yard abuts the neighbor's garage and driveway there. The, sort of the property itself rises a little bit in the backyard there. So the, we're concerned about the ledge there. So bumping it back, I believe it's just under three feet into the side yard is alleviating the concern of hitting ledge. There's also...
Also have to go to the Conservation Commission?
We already did that. Yeah, yeah. So this, and yes, we got that approval. The, the other piece of this is that in the buffer zone, there's less of the ADU that would be in the buffer zone. That property actually, as of, isn't in, a lot of the houses around my mom's house are in the buffer zone, but her house is not at this point. So this ADU just bumps into it a little bit. But if we move it back a little, it's less in the buffer zone.
Okay. The, did we cross reference the percentage of square footage? You good with all that? Less than 900?
Is it less than 900?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Any questions at this point?
Um, no, it seems to be a nice little project.
The, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're at home or wherever you might be. Anyone in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? Seeing none? The, no need for rebuttal discussion by the board. I will, I did check through the plans and the connecting piece. There's a enclosed structure, which is important. That can't be changed and be an open porch. So you'd have to keep that in mind to make it attached. And other than that, I don't have any problems with anybody else. Any questions? Discussion?
Right. And I do think, I do think there is a hardship based on, you know, the outcropping of ledge and trying to stay, you know, away from those buffer zones, the wetland area. So I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion on the matter brought by Andrea Finck, seeking a special permit to build an attached accessory dwelling unit and a variance for side yard setbacks pursuant to GZO 1.9, 5.24, 4.1.7, 3.2.1 at 38 Grapevine Road.
Second.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded. Ran a special permit for accessory dwelling unit and a variance for side yard setbacks. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Lichty?
Yes, on the special permit, yes, on the variance.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, great project. Good luck.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. You've heard our decision's favorable. We will put together a decision that eventually will make its way to you and you'll be able to file that. I'll, I'll write it. Okay, our next application tonight is the petitioner, 77 Bridge Street LLC. They're seeking to modify a special permit in variances to demolish an existing single-family structure and replace with the previously approved three-family dwelling unit in the same location at 13 and 13 Ria Hammond Street.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joel Favaza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 77 Bridge Street LLC. And as the chair stated, we are here looking to modify relief that was granted previously. This is not one of those cases where we got a special permit to alter and expand and we're missing that secondary special permit to completely demolish. What happened here was we received a use special permit and we received a variance relating to the front yard. Again, the front yard setback violation wasn't changing, but we were changing the use and losing our protection from the historic location of the property. During construction, they've gotten to a point where they need to take down a portion of the foundation wall so they can get more ledge out. As you recall, there was parking on the left-hand side proposed and there was also a drive-down driveway to turn into garages on the right-hand side. And at this point, although they are not taking the entirety of the structure down, they're crossing into a territory that looks like demolitions. The building inspector has asked us to come back and get a modification because one of the representations made to this board during our original permitting was that we will be, you know, reusing portions of the existing single-family that was there. It still remains true. My, actually, my client and I spoke about a couple hours ago and he, you know, said, they're not going to make me take the whole thing out, right? I said, I know. He's, well, you say you have demolition written on all of these slides. And I said, I know, but this is just what we have to do to get, you know, make sure the board is aware that more of this house is coming down than we thought it was going to. But he still very much intends to preserve what he can preserve of the existing foundation and, you know, first floor. As you can see, as I click through my slide fairly quickly, we have, I should go with the standard, right? It's a modification, so our standard is actually we just show good cause that the interest of the neighborhood is not going to be impaired by modifying it. The good cause is, although I admit in Gloucester, you're typically on either a marsh or ledge. This was ledge that they had not detected as, prior to the original permitting. And so this is why there's additional work happening. As far as neighborhood interests being protected, again, the final product will remain the final product. There was always ledge removal being planned on site. In fact, they're in the process of ledge removal for the last two days. This is not like, you know, there wasn't going to be blasting and now there is. There was always ledge removal. This is just additional ledge removal that's happening underneath a portion of the existing structure. Again, the relief was a 12.5-foot variance to the front yard setback to allow the structure to remain 7.5 feet. I have all the plans that were submitted in my slides. Did you need any of them? And then, again, this is just the aerial shot, the house as it was prior to. And this is what we have right now. This is the portion of the first floor and the foundation that they're looking to preserve. Again, they're looking to still use a portion of this, but that's the left-hand side where the parking, the exterior above-grade parking will be. And now we're coming around to the back. You can see actually in this photo, a field of little socks popping up are all dynamite points for the blasting of the ledge that was in the rear. And then this is the right-hand side of the house. And here's where the foundation wall needs to come down to get the rest of the ledge out to allow for the, the garages to get constructed as proposed.
So it's that wall that you want to...
Yeah, sorry, I'll go back. It's, I think that's it right there.
That's the one you want to...
Yeah. They gotta, that's, because...
Another part.
Yeah, the garages that were proposed, they're not able to dig out into it. They have to actually get the ledge out. They're hoping that it was, you know, because they put a foundation there, they're hoping that it was not sitting on bedrock. But when they got to it, they realized it was sitting on bedrock and there wasn't the ability to kind of, you know, punch through and put the garage in. They have to actually get the wall down to get the ledge out.
Okay.
And so again, the two pieces of relief you gave us were a special permit to go from a 1, 2, or 3 and a variance to the front yard. We're not asking to change those. We're just asking to modify based on the fact that we are now crossing into a territory where the building inspector believes this qualifies as demolition. Again, the entirety of the structure is not coming down, but enough of the structure is coming down to consider a demolition. And we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that change and that you'd allow the modification of the basically construction process to still end up with the same result you found worthy last time. So again, the standard you have to hit is that there's just cause and that modifying the social permit is not going to be onerous to the neighborhood.
Ready? Peter, did you get a tech? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the modification? Anyone in favor? Let's see, one hand.
I'm sorry, I, I put my hand up too soon. I'm not in favor.
Not ready, okay. Hang on, we'll get to you.
Yep.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, or anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I recognize Ms. Hartzell.
Yes, I, my name is Leinteen Hartzell. I live at 10 Hammond Street at an angle directly across from the construction site. And while I understand that the variance is probably going to be approved because all the other variances were approved despite enormous neighborhood opposition before, I just want to suggest that, given the expense of the already extensive blasting that needs to be done, that the builder consider modifying their original plan and not subjecting those of us who live very, very close, who have stonefield foundations, and I have a house that was built in 1800s, subject us to even more blasting. The blasting that happened yesterday shook my house quite a lot and that wasn't even the blasting that's going to be as close to my house as what needs to come in the next few days. And taking down that wall underneath the existing house to try and put garage underneath just seems, it just seems crazy. You're, you're trying to blast a part of mountain in the middle of a densely packed neighborhood and it just seems foolish. So that's my opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close public testimony. Rebuttal, please.
Thank you. The neighbor's concern is understood. I think the very brief hypothetical we have to look at is that we have a variance granted to allow the front of the house to remain where it has been, to allow the reuse of the remaining portion of the existing structure. And what's happening here is going to be, yeah, blasting to remove the ledge where the garages were permitted to go. And if there was to be a denial of this modification or say, hey, listen, no, you know, we are not going to allow you to do this, then ignoring the hardship, ignoring the costs, you know, just say, okay, well, then what would the applicant have to do? The applicant would then have to redesign the project as a three-family that conformed to the front yard setback. In order to do that, there would be even more blasting because now we're not having the ability to reuse any of that existing foundation that's been dug out in the front. So if you say, hey, listen, we can't modify this variance, you're stuck. Go, go get us a conforming design. Now you're pushing them further back into the lot and you're actually creating the need for even more ledge removal than we have because the parking requirement isn't going to change. We're still going to need to have the 1.5 spaces. And so you're still putting those garages in. We still have a lot of coverage, you know, maximum stuff like that. You can't just have this big sprawling, single-level, you know, tandem garage stuff, right? So, you know, the, the least, I can't give you an option where there is no blasting. Again, most of the blasting was part of the original design anyway. This additional blasting where the garage is going is the least amount of additional blasting and a denial of the modification of the variance and forcing a redesign that pushes the whole house seven and a half feet back, no, I'm sorry, 12 and a half feet back, would just create a much larger need for more ledge removal. So with respect to the neighbor's concerns, we understand. However, this is the most minimal amount of blasting to achieve the permitted result of the three-family structure that you permitted in May.
Thank you. Discussion by the board?
Is it, is there a difference between ledge and bedrock?
No. Actually, I'm not a geologist, I'm not an engineer. As far as I understand, no.
Yeah, so, I mean, the blasting's always inconvenient. It's a part of constructing anything. And it's not, certainly not something that we consider in zoning, really. You have to blast, you have to blast. So those things are regulated by other agencies. CPW, fire department, all that.
Can't hear you, Joe.
Sorry, not under our purview. It's not part of a zoning issue. So I don't see any reason not to grant the modification.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, as explained by, by Attorney Favaza, it's, this is probably the quickest, easiest way to get this done. Otherwise, you're just going to encroach into more bedrock, more ledge, whatever you want to call it, which is just going to continue to increase in whatever demolition they're going to need to do to get this building where it needs to get. I mean, I think we approve, I understand the situation. I think it's just modifying this for good practice. I, I don't have an issue with that.
Just want to commend the owners for bringing the matter to our attention and going by the book.
I agree. How something gets built, like how it looks, is not under our control. So entertain, if somebody's ready to make a motion to allow modification, I will entertain that.
I make a motion for the petition. Where am I here? 77 Bridge Street LLC is seeking to modify a special permit and variance to demolish an existing family structure and replace with the previously approved three-family dwelling unit in the same location pursuant to GZO 1.85, 1.7.4 at 13 and 13 Ria Hammond Street. I would find this modification going in the right direction. I have no issue with that. I would move for approval.
Second. Made and seconded. Roll call vote to allow the modification.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Ms. Lichty? Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Heard our decision's favorable?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last hearing, last hearing tonight. Sorry if it's not coming through. So, Prima Vaviga II LLC, before seeking variance for front yard, side yard setbacks and distance between buildings to remove an existing enclosed stairway in 7th Unit to make two, three-unit builds and a special permit for building height pursuant to 3.2.1 and 3.1.6 at 8 Ghul Court. They are represented by Ms. Armstrong, I believe. Can you, is she an applicant? There's a...
Yes, good evening, Carrie Armstrong.
Are you the attorney for, that I spoke to?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, good. Uh, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Armstrong. I'm an attorney with Johnson &amp; Bornstein in Andover, Massachusetts. And we represent the petitioner. Try to get that clear out for you. We represent the petitioner on this matter. We had a prior application before the board that was previously withdrawn. And it's our understanding that most of the relief that will be required for this project is going to be before the city council and we will be applying for that to the extent, however, that zoning relief is required from this board. We understand that's also prerequisite to any city council relief and that's why we're before you tonight. Natasha, would I be able to share my screen?
Could be able to share, yeah. Could be able to share, yeah.
Carrie, will you just state your address?
Yes, 12 Chestnut Street, Andover, Massachusetts.
Were able to share?
I don't see it coming up. I'm also trying to take this glare away for you. Could you pull up? Please?
While we're waiting for that to come up, we did kind of clarify, and we're, we're re-permitting or approving the height of what exists and the, where it's located, the front yard, side yard, the distance between the buildings. These are all things that are in place. Nothing's changing as far as what we're approving. Anything like that, the taking down of the centerpiece will be before the city council.
Yes.
Our, our dealing tonight is just in variances and distance and height.
Yes, that, that is all correct.
Can I ask, what, what, what is the motivation for, for doing this?
Sure, I will, I'll try to give you some history. So the, the property as it stands right now is a non-conforming seven-unit building. There were originally on the site, if I can just get to the, to the screen, I will, I'll pull up the timeline, but we provided a timeline in the presentation materials. So prior to 1989, there were two houses on this lot that were two separate two-family dwellings. I believe those were built somewhere between 1979 and 1989. In July of 1998, the city council approved a special permit to allow each of those two, each of those two-family buildings to be converted into three-family dwellings. That was done by city council special permit pursuant to a building permit. Certificates of occupancy were issued. Again, that's all roughly in this 1989 to 1990 timeframe. Somewhere between 1990 and I believe 2005, which is the most recent, the oldest aerial I can find out showing this building in its configuration, a seventh unit was added onto the back. It's a long triangle, rectangular-shaped parcel, and the seventh unit was added onto the back of it. So looking from Gould Street, you had the first three-family, then the second three-family, the seventh one, the seventh single unit was added, as well as an enclosed staircase.
Okay.
Can someone speak?
No.
Okay, so, so those additions were made. We believe those were made without permits or approval. That's the condition that the structure was in when my client purchased it. So she inherited those, those improvements that had been made. There has been some history of some violations, zoning violations, code violations that my client's been working with the city to rectify, the last remaining sort of major pieces to bring this property back into zoning compliance. The way that my client proposes to do that is by taking down the seventh unit, removing the enclosed stairway so that we're returning the property back to its prior legal conforming under the city council's special permit to be two separate three-family dwellings.
Okay, I get it.
So that, that's a lot of the history to, to get us to where we are today, which, again, understanding from all the conversations, that we are going to be going back before the city council for whatever relief is required to achieve that, both the, the demolition as well as the change of use back. All of the work is going to be within the existing footprint. So we're not, there is existing a front yard encroachment and a right side yard encroachment, and the building height is over the currently allowed building height. None of that is going to change. Just those two pieces going to come down. New egress stairs will be constructed, what will end up being in between the two buildings once they're separated. But everything else stays within the existing line. So there's no change to height, no change to any setback. If anything, we are lessening the non-conformity because the, the full structure will be a little bit smaller and they will now be passed through for light and visual.
Yeah. So we have to re-grant all this dimensional relief because the structure is changing? We're not really modifying previously granted anything. It's a change in use, so now we have to re-grant all the dimensional relief?
Yeah, for it to go back, yeah, for it to go back to city council, we have to establish that, give relief for where it sits.
For the way it currently exists.
So that they can determine and allow a change to it and change it back to two buildings and six units.
So...
So it is out of our control.
Do we also need to grant a variance from the, like, for having two residential dwelling, two, two separate dwelling units on a single lot?
That was already permitted by the city council.
Okay. Oh, right, back when they gave the original for the three.
Yeah, this guy illegally joined the two buildings together and created another unit. The city said, whoa, you can't have seven. And it became a court thing, and this is, this is the way.
A long road to a resolution.
Yeah, and come up with an agreement.
Resolution, okay. Wow.
Yeah, so we're, we're, in a very short version of it, we're bringing a non-conforming structure back to its prior historical legal conforming status.
Yeah, okay.
A long, a long sentence to try to make a short story, but that's what we're trying to achieve. And that is out of discussions with the city to try to correct some ongoing things that have gone on. And as part of a settlement was either to get it properly zoned as a, I'm sorry, to get it properly approved as a seven, or to bring it back to the original two-three families.
Two-three families, and you're doing, you're going for the two-three families. Okay. Thank you very much. I, I get it now.
Any, no other questions at this time? We'll allow testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward or raise your hand. See, I see Mark Johnson had a hand up. Is that your office?
Yes, Mark Johnson is, is another attorney with my office.
Okay, so that's you with the original hand raised?
Does he want to come in?
Does he want to come in?
He probably wants to come in. We are, we're zooming in separate.
His hand is raised. We'll take him, Mark Johnson, in.
Good evening. Mark Johnson, 12 Chestnut Street, Andover.
Thank you.
I'm also here with Carrie. If you have any other questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thanks for being on. No, if you have nothing else to say.
Somewhat confusing project.
I don't, I don't want to extend your meeting any, any longer than it has to be.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, okay, so anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition, please raise your hand or come forward. I see no opposition either here or online. I'll close the public testimony. There'll be no need for rebuttal, and we will entertain a motion.
Yeah, this is another one of those projects where it looks like you're granting a lot of relief, and it's actually a less intensification of use is going to result on the, on the property. And it's all a pre-existing building and use. So in order to help this matter come to resolution, I propose on the petition of...
Price law?
On, on the applicant's request to seek variances for front yard, side yard setbacks, and a distance between buildings to enable the applicant to remove an existing enclosed stairway and a seventh unit to make two three-unit buildings and a special permit for height at 8 Gould Court. I would move approval for all the relief requested. I think that the applicant has shown good cause for granting of the relief.
We have a motion made and seconded. We'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Lichty?
Yes, for all the relief requested.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, for all the relief requested.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Else about, yes, you've heard our decision is favorable. You folks would create a draft decision for us and forward it to the office. That will speed up the process and we'll get it approved at our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Okay, folks, our next meeting is February 27th, I believe, and Ron is going to be away. He will be available, but we're going to have to reach out early, Natasha, with, to see who makes sure Mike and James are going to be on for that. And then we go to March, March 13th and March 27th, and Catherine is going to be away on March 13th. So, again, looking to make sure we are covered. It's only fear to the applicants that it'd be great to have five.
Chairman?
Yeah?
If I could just say that now, I will not be available for March 13th. I will not be available.
I can participate remotely, Ms. Chairman.
All right, let's, we'll, let's get a communication out for the 27th of February, and then we will go from there, seeing.
Sorry.
So that's great, Peter. I got that on my chart here. And if nobody has anything else, I'll certainly entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote to adjourn.
Ms. Lichty?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. We are officially adjourned. Thank you all.